And welcome to the March 21st, 2023 meeting of the City of Lakeland Planning and Zoning Board. The board meets every third Tuesday of the month to review proposals for changing the city's comprehensive plan, its future land use map, zoning changes consistent with the map, and conditional use permits. The board is made up of seven members appointed by the City Commission and is assisted by the staff of the Community and Economic Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Staff will advance any presentation slides that should have been provided prior to the meeting. The meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is a public hearing where we expect to hear new applicants explain their request and receive comments from affected parties. The second part of the meeting is termed the general meeting and primarily consists of acting on recommendations from staff about the cases that came up in the prior month's meeting. We invite everyone who wishes to participate to be heard. We do ask that you be concise in your comments and that speakers avoid being repetitive. That is, if several people have pointed out traffic concerns, there is no need to hear additional comments regarding traffic again. But we would like to hear anything new that has not been addressed. In order to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and the clerk has a timer for this purpose. We respectfully ask that you adhere to this rule. We also ask at this time that you silence all mobile devices. Also, if you do come up to speak, please give your name and address before speaking. We thank all of you for being here, and I will turn the meeting over to Sylvia to read the, in lieu of Secretary Ronald Roberts being here.
Okay, item number one. Compatibility review to allow for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit on property located at 319 East Maxwell Street. Owner applicant Deborah Shane, and this is the consideration of the final decision.
Hello, good morning. DeMaristaw Senior Planner, Community Economic Development. The subject property is located at 319 East Maxwell Street. This property is zoned RE1, single-family residential within the urban neighborhood context district. The adjoining parcels to the subject property are all residential. This is the general location aerial. Accessory dwelling units are permitted in the urban context districts where legally conforming, single-family homes, detached dwelling units are on the same lot or parcel, and a minimum required one-street parking is required in addition to the single principal structure. Following site plan is, shows the proposed structure towards the rear of the home. The orientation of the north arrow is towards the south, but it's, so that way you can kind of see this was right here. The proposed elevation will accommodate and be in similar stature to the principal structure. And the following are just a couple of additional photos of the current home. This is the front of the home. This is the proposed location of the accessory dwelling unit. They will be towards the rear of the house. This here is just a long view of the proposed location facing east towards the proposed location of the accessory dwelling unit. And this is just their rear yard facing east, so you can see the extended view of their yard. And during this time, did not receive any additional phone calls or emails in opposition to the project. I will pause here and invite the applicant up to answer any questions and provide any feedback for the board.
Morning, I'm Debbie Chaney, 319 East Maxwell Street. So we're building this for my father-in-law to live on our property, basically.
Any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the audience?
So the following conditions are for the permit of the ADU. So the development standards in accordance with RE1 zoning classification subsection 4.3.2 of the Land Development Code, except otherwise provided within. The site development plan, the project shall be developed in accordance with site development, including attachment A, and the floor plan that was included in attachment B. The architectural elevations, projects shall be developed in accordance with architectural elevations included in attachment C. And the pedestrian access pathways shall be constructed along the east side of the existing, single-family home from the front yard driveway to the accessory dwelling unit. The architectural treatments, all the windows shall match the window style proportions, recessed and sill detail of those used on the existing, single-family home. And the accessory dwelling shall be finished with either a brick veneer or stucco brick finish which matches the brick veneer on the existing, single-family home.
Questions? We have a motion to approve the request.
Motion to approve the request as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Am I still, because he's here?
I think you lost your job, Sylvia Ronald.
Item two. Compatibility review to allow for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit on property located at 809 Osceola Street. Owner Gregory Neely, applicant Sherrett Construction, and this is for consideration of final decision.
Good morning again, DeMaristaw, Community Economic Development. The subject property is located at 809, excuse me, 809 Osceola Street. The property is zoned RE4, single-family residential, within the urban neighborhood context district. The adjoining parcels of the property are also all within the, all residential. The property is also within the East Lake Morton Historic District. The, on February 23rd of 2023, the project did meet with the Historic Preservation Board Design Review Committee, and it was granted approval of this proposal design. And then here are the site plan. So the proposed ADU will be for a second floor to the existing garage that's towards the rear of the home. This here is the proposed elevation. As you can see, the second floor will be added to the garage. This here is just the image of the existing front of the home and the existing garage towards the rear of the home. This is the front of the garage facade towards the rear. And this is just a side angle from the east side facing the garage area. And I will, we did not receive any phone calls or emails in opposition of this request. And I will pause here, allow the applicant up if you have any questions for them.
Good morning, I'm Dan Sherrett with Sherrett Construction. We're at 124 West Main, and we're the applicant for the project.
Do you have any comments? Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
So it's a project for his in-laws. It's going to be a second-floor ADU that they can move their parents into and age in place.
They're going to age in place with stairs?
It's going to have a lift on the exterior.
On the exterior?
Right. It's a removable lift device.
Do you have pictures of what that's going to look like?
Well, there's a picture of the deck on the elevation, so you've probably seen like the tracks they attach to stairways and whatnot. So it's something that can be removed after the use is completed.
Any other questions?
I just have a question, is there an alley behind this?
There is.
Yes.
There is, okay. So what we're seeing on that top left is what the view is from the alley? Or from the?
The garage door, the double-wide door faces the alley.
So the stairway will come from the alley side of the?
From the alley, correct.
The alley, okay.
So they'll park in the rear, right?
That's currently being used as a garage?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that second floor over the garage is for residential?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Once the in-laws age in place and are no longer there, is there an extra driveway needed because most likely that will be rented out?
There's street parking, I do know that.
They do have enough parking, I mean, from the alley, it's a 50-foot lot to park at least three if he goes back there. And the garage, of course, that can fit two inside there, so we evaluate this, and I do meet them up in a parking department.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Any comments from the public?
Good morning. Cliff Taylor, live at 807 Osceola Street, next door to the in-laws. I'm here just to support their petition. We've discussed with the neighbors and their needs for their family presently and even in the future, not just their in-laws, but maybe their son in the future. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion from the board?
Second conditions.
I'm sorry.
So the following conditions are for the property. Development standards in accordance with RE4 zoning classification subsection 4.3.2 of the Land Development Code, except otherwise provided. The site plan, the site development plan, the project shall be developed in accordance with site development plan included in attachment A and the floor plan included in attachment B. The architectural elevations, the project shall be developed in accordance with architectural elevations and included in attachment C. And that's it.
Now, is there a motion from the board?
I move to approve this project.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Thank you.
Item three. Major modification of a conditional use to increase the height of an existing ground-mounted personal wireless facility or cell tower from 112.8 to 127.8 on property located south of East Edgewood Drive, east of Buckingham Avenue, west of Oxford Avenue, northwest of Ashland Drive, Cleveland Heights Golf Course. Owner, City of Lakeland, applicant Harrison Frey, Tower Engineering Professionals, Inc., and this is for consideration of final decision.
Hi, good morning, for the record, I'm Philip Scarish, Principal Planner with the Community Economic Development. This case was withdrawn by the applicant late yesterday afternoon. Their scope of work has changed, and their antenna work that they'll be switching out is still below the approved tower height of 110 feet that's, that's out there at the golf course today. We do expect another provider to come in with another application to increase the tower height. I do not know when that will occur, they did not know when that will occur, when that would occur. They had mentioned that possibly AT&amp;T would be looking at increasing the height of the tower, and I apologize to any audience members, I tried to get up here earlier, but I was held downstairs with a, doing some, with a customer, so I was able to intercept, was unable to intercept any audience members that were here for this case to let them know that there was withdrawn. But this may be back later this year. It may not be, so we'll just, we'll just wait for that applicant, for the application to come, and we'll re-notice at that time. So, thank you very much. No action is needed.
Any questions? So we take final action on this?
There's no action because the application has been withdrawn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, let's move on.
Item four. Conditional use to allow for a child daycare facility on property located at 1350 East Main Street. Owner Sean Scarborough, applicant Patrick Pantin, and this is for consideration of final decision.
Good morning, for the record, Todd Vargo, Senior Planner with Community and Economic Development. Their request before you today is to allow a new child daycare facility at the Family Worship Center at 1350 East Main Street. Here's our general location map. Here's an aerial. This, in the center here, kind of highlighted with the crosshatching, is the subject property. This is, the subject property is currently improved with a church sanctuary and some, with some classrooms and office space, and an accessory building up here in the corner. Sanctuary was constructed in 1966, the accessory building in 1975. In 2012, a new sanctuary was built and was constructed across Rose Street, and that's this here. And, and that was given PUD zoning, and again, in 2012. So this sanctuary is not really used all that much right now. And again, that's, their request is to do a daycare, establish a child daycare in that facility, in the classrooms and offices surrounding the sanctuary. The sanctuary will be used for youth ministries. Here's a picture of the subject property, this is the older sanctuary from Main Street, so we're looking north from Main Street here. Here is site plan, whoops, sorry. Here is the site plan, you can see the sanctuary in the middle here will be used for, again, youth ministries, and then the preschool will occupy these classrooms and offices kind of surrounding the sanctuary. The, so within office zoning districts, churches, synagogues, and other houses of worship are permitted uses. Accessory uses such as this daycare facility are considered for approval through the conditional use process, which again, is what they're here to do today. The daycare will have approximately 150 children, and hours of operation will be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Run through a couple more slides. This is the entrance from Rose Street, this is where all of the traffic will come in and out of the site, actually, let me go back and show you that real quick. So again, here's the, here's the structure with the sanctuary and the preschool. This is Main Street down here. This is Rose Street up here, so here's the new sanctuary building. All the traffic will come in off of Rose Street. They'll queue around the parking lot, and then come back up, and then drop off the children underneath this overhang, and then they'll continue out and go out Rose Street. So this is the entrance from Rose Street. You can see, again, the parking lot where they'll, got lots of room to queue here, and then this is the drop-off point for the children. This is looking north, Main Street's at the back now. This is where the drop-off pickup area will be, there's the new sanctuary, and Rose Street is over here somewhere. Can't quite see it, but. So as part of it, a daycare, they have to have a playground, some kind of outdoor recreation space for the children, that'll be in this grassy area here. This is on the north side of the sanctuary, so this is Rose Street right here. Right over here is that entrance where everybody's going to be coming in and out of, so that'll be the playground. And you can see the playground area right here. And there's an existing basketball court next to it. So, you know, the important thing for this daycare is getting the kids safely in and out of the school, or out of the daycare. And traffic operations for a daycare tend to be intensive during the drop-off and pickup times. So to reduce the impacts on Main Street, we are asking the, we have a condition for the church to close, there's an existing entrance right here, which is, which doesn't meet our spacing criteria, and it's too close to Alicia Avenue right here. So we're asking them to permanently close this, and also asking that during the drop-off and pickup times, for them to cone off this access on, on the western portion of the site that accesses Main Street. Because what we certainly don't want is people coming in, they're queuing up to drop off their kids, and then somebody has the bright idea, well, I'm running late today, I need to get in here quick, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut in on Main Street and then wait here for somebody to let them into the line, and then their, the queue ends up being on Main Street, which is a public road. So that's why we're asking this to be coned off, and then this to go away, because it's too close to Alicia, it doesn't meet our spacing requirements. No emails or comments were received, and I will let the applicant come up and, if he wants to add anything to what I've said, or expand upon anything.
Good morning, I'm Patrick Pantin, 1707 East Elm Road. And everything as what Todd described. The only thing I have to add is, talking to the pastor last night, the pickup and drop-off will be, they will come in and park and walk the kids to the door versus a line of, a car line to the canopy. Because the kids are mainly in strollers or basically daycare, not a, not like a preschool where everyone is running around.
So they'll still be coming in, the circulation that's shown there, just parking in angled spaces?
Yes.
And then coming?
Yes.
So everything will be pretty much self-contained as far as kids being dropped off and being walked in, parking and everything else? So it shouldn't interfere at all with any of the public streets, is what I'm gathering?
Correct, it won't.
Okay.
How many students are you anticipating, or how many children?
149, 150.
Is on Alicia Street at the very top, it looks like there's an inset, is that not a driveway right there? Yeah, right there.
It is.
Okay, so will that continue to be a driveway, or?
Yes, it will be. But that can also be coned off during school hours if need be.
And Alicia wrote, just for clarification too, that was vacated, gosh, probably 10 years ago, so that it's actually owned by the church, I believe, if not, not public right-of-way?
Well, when they were describing first, the people coming in and, you know, being late, but it's not the case, so I would imagine that the people coming in off Alicia Street would be the ones parking right there, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the application, I mean, it didn't really step in age range here. I mean, I don't think this would affect the conditions, so we're not going to change the access requirements, but we assume that they would be more sort of, you know, grade school level, they would be using the pickup and drop-off as stated on the application, so.
Any other questions from the board?
The coning component appears to be pretty significant on a daily basis. Any idea who's responsible for that piece?
They have ground staff there every day.
Okay.
And people who stay there and clean up, so they can drop them off there in the morning, block it off, pick them up after school hours.
Do you have a plan for like the time that it will be blocked off? It will be blocked off between 7:30 and 8:30, or, you know?
Not as yet. Assuming they start at eight, so there's somebody will be there beforehand to block that off and get the, the right away. And basically, for, on preparation for the school, the school will give out a map of where they will go, where the car line will be, or where the access will be to each parent, so they know to come into Rose Street, not to Main Street.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the conditions of approval into the record then. A, permitted uses a child daycare center with a maximum enrollment of 150 students. B, site development plan, oh, I'm sorry, we didn't open it up to the public. My bad, I jumped the gun.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to open it up to the public comment?
If you want, put last.
You want me to finish? Okay.
As long as it's already started.
Sorry, we usually do that after the applicant comes up and I kind of jump the gun, anyway. B, site development plan, the project shall be developed in substantial accordance with the site development plan included as attachment C, which is what you just saw, with the approval of the Director of Community and Economic Development. Minor adjustments may be made at the time of site plan review without requiring a modification of this conditional use. C, development standards in accordance with the O1/urban corridor sub-district standards. D, daycare center traffic circulation, one, all vehicle pickup and drop-off activities shall be accommodated on-site. At no time shall vehicles queuing for pickup and drop-off extend into adjacent public rights-of-way. Two, ingress and egress for drop-off pickup shall be solely from Rose Street. During drop-off pickup times, all other entrances shall be blocked by orange traffic cones. Number three, the driveway access location to East Main Street, just west of Alicia Road, shall be permanently closed and restored with curbing, sod, and sidewalk with other city Public Works Department requirements. The driveway shall be closed before any daycare operations begin. This can be accomplished by temporary means with a permanent constructed closure completed within six months of the beginning of daycare operations. And I, I think we need to correct that, I think it's Alicia Street, not Alicia Road, so my bad, we'll correct that.
I think it's Alicia Road.
It's Alicia Road? Okay, I went off of the, I went off of the site plan, so, okay, so we're good. E, outdoor lighting in accordance with section 4.6 of the Land Development Code. F, bicycle parking, bicycle parking shall be provided in compliance with section 4.11.6 of the City Land Development Code and Index 900 of the City Engineering Standards Manual. Those are our conditions.
I have a quick question again. Is there going to be any after-school?
Um, is there going to be any after-school drop-off?
Uh, they said the, I'll, I'll let them answer. They said the hours of operation are from eight to six, so.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if they're planning on a second one after.
Uh, well, after-school is between four and six, so.
Right, right.
I'm Kevin Guy here on behalf of the church. At this point in time, we're not planning any after-school. It's gonna be primarily a drop-off in morning and pickup in the afternoon. There's no, there's been no discussions of a, school day ends, we're gonna be an after-care facility once the school day ends. We're primarily gonna be all day or if somebody only wants their kid there half a day, but we're really looking at it all day.
Okay, can you please state your address for the record?
Uh, five one one five St. Lucia Drive, Lakeland, Florida.
Also, how do you, this question, um, your timing, when do you plan to open? Is it, would be by the school year, is that your goal or?
Uh, the earliest would be, and Patrick, if I could speak more of that, 'cause we're, he's, he's handling all the plans, but I know it wouldn't be any earlier than what, the fall? Yeah, the fall of this year.
Okay, fall twenty twenty-three. All right, thank you.
Okay, any comments from the public?
Good morning. I'm Solis Stanley D. and I'm from twelve ninety-five East Main Street, pastor of the church across the street, and I'm here to support this project. I'm a former retired police lieutenant and a former professor at the University of Tampa, and I know that, and children need a safe place where they can be watched after because early childhood, um, as all of us know, is very, very important and critical to a child. So I'm here to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yes, I'm Roger Fox from sixty-two eleven Hereford Drive, Lakeland, Florida, and I'm here to support the project. The children are the future of Lakeland. And if, if they're not taken care of, then someone else will put ideas in their mind that are detrimental to the city and change the texture and nature of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? No further comments? Any other questions from the board? I hear a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five. Conditional use to recognize an existing used car dealership and allow for the expansion of the vehicle parking storage area on property located at twelve thousand West Memorial Boulevard. O.K. Cars Lakeland.
Twelve hundred. Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred West Memorial.
Oh, twelve hundred West Memorial Boulevard. Uh, O.K. Cars Lakeland. Owner, O.K. Cars. Applicant, Susan Swift Boggs Engineering LLC. And this is for consideration of final decision.
That's correct. Good morning again for the record. I'm Philip Scarish, Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. Uh, we have a conditional use permit for, uh, O.K. Cars. Uh, you may recognize it's the old Lakeland Toyota dealership before they, uh, moved over to their I-four location. And this is the site right here. Let's dive in. This is Memorial. And here's Crestview. Again, this is the previous, uh, Lakeland Toyotas. Now, O.K. Cars, it has a existing zoning of C-two, uh, with future land use designation of mixed commercial corridor. Um, about three years ago, the City Commission, uh, amended the, the Land Development Code to require a conditional use permit for, uh, used car sales, 'cause we were getting a proliferation of used car sales along Memorial and within the area that Main Street, uh, near the previous case. And so we wanted to have a little more control over, uh, used car dealerships, uh, within the city. Uh, that made this site, when it was adopted, made this site non-conforming. So what we're doing is we're recognizing, recognizing the existing used car dealership here, um, which they have the main building here and they have a large service center. Um, and then they have a large, um, parking area in the back for, uh, for cars. Uh, the application started as, uh, an expansion of this parking area, so they are expanding the parking area and I'll show you on the site plan. Uh, that's really the only, a major thing that's, that's occurring there. They're, they're increasing the size of the parking area. But when we're discussing with them in the early phases of it, we would say, well, let's just go ahead and do a conditional use permit for the whole thing. So this is conforming with the Land Development Code, um, so they don't have to worry about any issues moving forward. Um, so that's what this is. We're recognizing the existing, uh, used car dealership there with an expansion, uh, of the parking to the south. Go over some slides here. So this is, uh, in that parking area, looking south. Um, if you extend beyond those trees, uh, it, uh, you, you'll run into, uh, Lake Bonnet. And Lake Bonnet Springs is just to the, just to the east or the park is just to the east of the site. Uh, this is looking southeast in the site, in the southern end of the site. This is looking back north towards Memorial. The site slopes off kinda gradually there. And this is looking back northeast towards the dealership and the service center. And this is looking northwest over towards Crestview. They have an entrance on Crestview, which we'll touch here in a minute. Uh, and then, uh, you do have some single-family uses that are adjoining the site as well. And we're gonna address those, uh, in our conditions. But, um, uh, this is the site plan and, uh, this dark gray area here is where the, uh, where they plan to, uh, extend, uh, the, the parking. They'll increase the, the size of the, uh, retention pond. Uh, there is an existing wetland that's associated with, uh, Lake Bonnet, but they are, uh, not encroaching with any of the buffers, uh, so, uh, they're good there. And then there will be discharging into the stormwater pond here before it discharges into the, the natural system. Uh, again, we have Crestview here and, um, we did, uh, I did receive a call from a Crestview resident, um, with a, a position saying that there's, you know, that the people kinda speed down Crestview, um, when they take their test drives and things like that, but we'll, we'll touch into that with the conditions. I am going to turn it over to the applicant who's got a presentation and, um, and then I'll be back for questions and conditions.
Good morning. Thank you very much. My name is, um, Susan Swift and hopefully I'll see my slides up there in a minute.
Can you please state your address?
Please, please.
I'm sorry?
Your address.
Um, I'm representing the applicant, O.K. Cars, and, uh, I'm with B-B-E Boggs Engineering. Our address is six oh seven South Alexander Street, uh, Plant City, Suite one oh one. Thank you. Uh, I will be brief because as always, your staff does an excellent job, so they stole some of my thunder. This is the site. Uh, the uses around it are compatible. Um, there are a few, um, as Mr. Scarish mentioned, a few, um, single-family homes right on Crestview. Crestview, uh, dead ends in a cul-de-sac. And, um, one of our, uh, service exits is on, uh, Crestview. The surrounding uses to the north, commercial, um, other, uh, dealerships to the west. Um, quite a wooded area, uh, directly on the east. And, um, you can see recent development, uh, I mean, on the, on the west. And on the east wooded and development, so, um, it's compatible with the surrounding uses, the general area. Um, Memorial is a main, uh, road and then the railroad tracks, um, you can see just, uh, beyond this site and the overpass over the, over the tracks. Next slide. And as was mentioned, unbeknownst to, uh, our client, they bought what was a previous, uh, used, new car dealership and they have a used car dealership. They did not realize that this used cars were conditional use. So they came in to expand the vehicle storage area in the back and found out that the used car dealership was non-conforming. So we're here to do both, um, today, to recognize, uh, the conditional use for used cars and to expand the, um, storage lot in the back. Next slide. And, um, the shaded areas, the expansion, we are respecting the wetland buffers and the wetland. We are reconfiguring, um, the stormwater pond to, um, get more drainage and to fit in this, uh, parking area. It's two hundred and six additional spaces. Uh, we'll have, uh, the type B buffer on the, um, west side, uh, next to the residences. So, and on the other side, there's already a retaining wall and wooded area, so we did not propose, uh, buffer on, on the other side. Um, but we do have, uh, the required type B buffer, which we will, um, put adjacent to the single-family homes. And we have no objections to the other conditions. Last slide. This is what's involved in our proposed project. I have, um, Greg Baggett here if you have any operational questions. However, we do not have any objections to the conditions, um, including the speed, the speed hump proposed on Crestview and we respectfully request your recommendation for approval on this project. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the board?
Uh, are, are, is the Crestview access going to be closed?
No. It's, it's not the primary access. But we are, we have been, it has been requested that we put a speed hump there and it, it slopes down quite a bit to the cul-de-sac, but it's not proposed to be closed.
And I, I just have a question in terms of, um, the property on the north side of Memorial. Would the vehicles that are currently being stored there be moved to this location?
Yes, that is the reason for this expansion of the parking area, so that will not be used for storage anymore.
Perfect.
And how many speed pumps are gonna be on, or speed bumps are gonna be on Crestview?
It'll be one to the south of the entrance. Yeah, and I'll read that into the record as far as, for the conditions.
Any other questions?
I guess just to confirm your question, you're saying the current vehicles parked in the, the frontage of Memorial or where, where were your reference to?
Um, in the aerial shot, uh, on the north side, there are vehicles that are parked on the, uh, to the east of Atlantic Avenue, past the old People's Gas. Um, and so, yeah, those vehicles would move across over and that north side would be brought into compliance.
Understood.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Do you wanna review any of the conditions?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna read those right now. Um, so.
Well, I was going to review the conditions and then have that comment.
Oh, we, we.
Whatever.
You wanted to hear from the, anybody in, in opposition?
Anyone in the audience?
All right. Uh, number one, permitted uses motor vehicle sales used and those permitted by right-of-way in the C-two zoning district. Number two, site development plan. The site development plan shall be, uh, in development in substantial accordance with the site development plan as included as attachment C, with the approval of the Director of Community Economic Development. Minor adjustments may be made at the time of site plan review without requiring modification of this conditional use permit. Number three, outdoor lighting. In accordance with section four point six of the Land Development Code, any new outdoor lighting associated with the parking expansion shall be designed such that it is shielded, minimize glare, uh, when viewed from adjacent properties. Buffering, a type B buffer shall be installed along the western boundary line adjacent to the single-family uses. Existing vegetation may be incorporated as part of the buffer. Five performance standards, all motorical. A, all motor vehicle sale, uh, all motor vehicles shall be parked and stored within a designated parking space as shown as and within the site development plan attachment C. B, the parking, storage of motor vehicles of unapproved surfaces within the easements or adjacent right-of-way shall be prohibited. C, no motor vehicle shall be parked, stored, um, or stored such that they, they impair or otherwise block access to any internal driveway or parking aisles. D, parking areas required for customer or employee parking shall not be used for the storage or display of, of vehicle inventory. E, the loading and unloading of vehicle transport carriers within adjacent right-of-way shall be prohibited. Last two conditions. The owner applicant shall install a speed hump on Crestview Avenue south of the existing side driveway prior to the completion of the expanded car lot, subject to an affirmative vote of the affected proprietors on the street in accordance with Public Works' traffic calming process. Number seven, this conditional use shall be for the benefit of O.K. Cars LLC only should the ownership of the establishment change, including the sale or transfer of majority interest in any business owning the establishment or should the establishment be leased to another person or entity. The business tax receipt allowing the, the, uh, allowing for used cars shall, used car sales at this location lapse for a period of three hundred and sixty-five days or longer. A used car sales dealership shall not be reestablished without, uh, the approval of the City Commission. And I stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Again, any comments in the audience? Are there a motion to approve the request?
I move to approve the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Wishing passes.
Item six. Major modification of a conditional use to allow for the expansion of a, an existing bar into ground floor retail space located at two oh one East Main Street. Owner, He Shabam LLC. Applicant, Solomon Weiseth. And this is for consideration of final decision.
Good morning. For the record, Todd Vargo, Senior Planner with Community Economic Development. The, uh, subject property is located at the southwest corner of South Tennessee and East Main Street. It has a future land use designation of Regional Activity Center and zoning designation of C-seven, which is our Munn Park Historic District. The, uh, proposed bar expansion would be, um, located on the ground floor here of the building. The most recent uses, uh, to occupy this space were an indoor commercial recreation use, the dart world gaming arena you see there, and there was an office for a mortgage lender. I believe it was RP funding. The applicant seeks to amend the conditional use that it was approved in two thousand fourteen for the Lakeland Loft, a jazz music-themed cigar bar on the second floor of the property. So he wants to expand or to amend that conditional use to allow a bar to expand into the ground floor tenant space. The expansion would have a tropical island theme and under it, operate under a different name, providing seats for up to two hundred patrons. This is the property from Tennessee. Here is a site plan, um, for, of the existing second floor Lakeland Loft. Uh, on the top there and then on the bottom is the proposed first floor island bar. Um, to allow for outdoor seating, the applicant plans to, um, move the front wall back and create this open porch area, um, an outdoor covered seating area similar to, uh, what Linksters has right down the street and Black and Brew Coffee House also has right down the street. And I believe, yes, I have a, um, the applicant provided a, uh, a picture of what that might look like. Uh, the proposed ground floor bar expansion will be marketed as Lakeland Island Breeze, uh, an island-themed tiki bar offering Caribbean-themed cocktails and music. The venue would operate under the same The venue would operate under the same COP, four, sorry, four COP license as the Lakeland Loft and will offer a full bar with beer, wine, and liquor. No food would be prepared on the ground floor. This, however, it will share an interior connection with the Lakeland Loft. And the Lakeland Loft does serve small plates of food and hors d'oeuvres. So in terms of zoning, any bar coming into the downtown area, there are some requirements we need to look at that the City Commission set in place. So I'm going to go ahead and read those conditions and our, our answers to them. The first, first criteria, I said conditions, I meant criteria. The first criteria is whether the proposed use will result in a concentration of such uses within a particular block or part of a block so as to be detrimental to the growth and revitalization of downtown. So there are seven bars with similar conditional use approvals in downtown. All but one of these establishments are located within about two blocks of the subject property, mostly around Main Street and Kentucky Avenue. This, again, this Lakeland Island Breeze would operate under the same four COP licenses Lakeland Loft, and we would not consider it as a separate establishment. Certainly would be an intensification of the existing bar, but, but we don't, because it's serving under the same COP license, we wouldn't consider it a separate establishment. The second criteria is whether the proposed use is in close proximity to other land uses that may be particularly sensitive or unduly harmed by the negative impacts of the proposed use, such as facilities for children or for the elderly. So within our 250-foot notification area, there were no uses that would be sensitive to the proposed use. The nearest church is more than 1,100 feet from the proposed establishment. That would be the All Saints Episcopal Church next door to this building. And then the nearest school is McHale Elementary, approximately 1,400 feet to the north. The third criteria is whether the size or scale of the proposed use is appropriate at the specific location. We believe it is. The footprint of this proposed use is comparable with other downtown bars and will provide downtown patrons with additional entertainment options. Again, the tropical theme being a first for downtown Lakeland. You know, it's essentially the same size as the Lakeland Loft above it, so it's kind of hard to argue that one. The fourth criteria is whether the owners and operators of the establishment are unlikely to manage and control negative impacts as evidenced by prior criminal records, code enforcement citations, or police service calls concerning other properties owned or operated by them, citizen complaints, or similar indicators. So the applicant, Mr. Wasif, has more than 20 years of restaurant, bar, and management experience. There's nothing in, in that 20 years to suggest he will have difficulty manager, managing or controlling impacts. He has operated the Hookah Palace, a full service bar, excuse me, full-service bar on Kentucky Avenue since 2008, and also managed, or operated the Lakeland Loft, a cigar bar that you can see on the second floor, since 2014. So as part of this criteria, we do ask the Lakeland Police Department for a, a list of all the calls that have been made for all the bars downtown in a two-year period. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into naming which bar had the most calls or, but I will say that Hookah Palace had the least and Lakeland Loft had the second least amount of calls. Hookah Palace had six calls for service within two years, and Lakeland Loft had eight calls for service. Again, I don't wanna name names, but the, the one with the most had 102 calls for service. So Mr. Wasif seems to be doing something right. The fifth criteria is whether the Board of Directors of the Lakeland Downtown Development Authority supports the proposed use. The applicant presented his, his proposal to the Lakeland Downtown Development Authority at its regular meeting on February 16th, 2023. At that meeting, the Board of Directors voted four to nothing to accept this staff recommendation in support of the proposed bar. So he has met all the criteria that the City Commission has, has put in place to establish a bar downtown. We have received no objections or no communication at all, actually no calls, no emails that I'm aware of, prior to this public hearing. I will, I will stand for questions and, and let Mr. Wasif come up if he wants to say anything. Oh, here is the approval letter from the LDDA, the Lakeland Downtown Development Authority. I know it's, I know it's hard to read, but you can see the Julie Townsend, the Executive Director's signature on the bottom. It's definitely from the LDDA. Yep, and, yeah, so let me go back to there and let Mr. Wasif, if he wants to say anything.
Good morning, Solomon Wasif, 1512 Mariner, Lakeland, Florida, 33803.
Do you have any comments, sir?
I just wanna say that building has been, can you go back into the first, how it looked before or how it is right now? Right here. Thank you. This building been looking like this for the last, maybe, as long as you remember, you know, for the last maybe 15, 16 years. Even we have some businesses going inside and out. You hardly can see anything, always just doing, you know, what I would like to see in that building, really be an icon for downtown Lakeland. You know, the Lakeland Loft become, you know, a big hit in Lakeland and not just in, in here. We have people coming from all over. They say this is really wonderful, and we would like to do the same thing downstairs.
So essentially, you're gonna have two bars here, the loft and one downstairs?
Yes, sir. And we have existing door between both bars from the inside, the loft as well, too.
And questions from the board?
So will there be connected access? So if I were to get a drink downstairs, I could take it up?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's, this environment will have no smoking indoor downstairs. You know, if they wanna smoke, they can smoke only outside. We not, we're not gonna have ashtrays. It's only by request, so we don't encourage smoking downstairs.
And I know City Lakeland's expanded that sidewalk in front. Is there any intent to move tables?
I don't think we will be allowed to serve anything on outside. You know, the only thing I will ask, you know, as inviting environment to play or streaming some, you know, an island music. You know, we gonna, we're gonna stream island music inside, but I would request that we will ask to have some music outdoor, not on the street, but inside the patio. You know, as any, some, a lot of the restaurants in downtown and a lot of the establishment, they have some music on their patio and a music on the street as well. We just request to have the same thing, if it's possible.
Okay, just to clarify, the outdoor seating for the sidewalk area that you referenced there, those regulations last year were more than two under Public Works. I believe they do them as part of the, on the Park Act program now. Those provisions are only for restaurant, food service leases, so they do not apply to bars. The President for bars going to back in the Linksters, which approved back in the mid-2000s, says that they cannot, outdoor seating on their premises, in this case, the recessed area there. But what General said was that they did not want to expedite out to the sidewalk area. Some of those bars later, I think, get a little more, you know, a little more, more.
Ivyly?
Yeah, a little more feisty, I guess would be the term. So I, I think that's been the sentiment, at least for not, not to allow that, so there. And we did discuss with Mr. Wasif. The other issue is the President has been to not allow the bars to have outdoor music because we, in the past, we did have some problems with a couple of bars that we, we were not able to control very well. So we are recommending that that condition be carried forward there. So he would not be able to have any outdoor streaming recorded music in the recessed area there that we were showing on the site plan.
And that's consistent to all bars in downtown?
Correct. He's, what he referenced was that the restaurants, which do not require conditional use, that would be Harry's, Palace Pizza, Taco Bus, they don't have that restriction, but the bars would. So Molly's, Linksters, you know, revival in any place, I mean, they would have that same limitation there on outdoor music.
Any other questions from the board?
Having, having frequented, frequented your establishment on the second floor there, I'm, I'm aware there's an elevator. Will this construction on the first floor impact that elevator access at all?
No, there will be no, no new construction on the, the side of the Lakeland Loft. Nothing at all.
So if you wanted to, to leave the Island Breeze, you'd have to walk around the corner and go into the elevator?
No, ma'am. You see, just like you leave the front, there will be really three exits into that building, one in the front, one in the back, and one through the loft.
So essentially, you're gonna have two restaurants combined into one?
That is correct, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
One last question I've got is, you've got outdoor seating and tables, or is it gonna be picked up every night, or are the tables gonna be out there?
Actually, this is not the actual style of tables and chairs. We are using aluminum tables, light to handle, and that will be picked up and going inside, as well as the chairs will be using colorful, different colors chairs, and that will be picked up and put inside. It will be nothing outside. But actually, that mirror is almost the same type of mirror we're gonna have on the wall. When you walk inside, it's gonna have like a, as you're walking in on one side, all the way, like a beach-style mirror on one side. And the faucet, like you see in the front of the building, that will be also another one built around the bar from the inside to give it that look for the tiki bar.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Good morning.
Stuart Sim, 1561 Roethlisberger, Lakeland. First of all, I just wanna say I really endorse Mr. Wasif's new project. He's been a, a good business partner for downtown Lakeland, and I fully support what he's trying to do. Lot of new has been said today. New bar, new address, new concept. But what, what I'm seeing written down is a modification of an existing conditional use. And what I would say is anybody else moving into this space, that would be a brand-new conditional use, not a modification of something existing. This is a new bar and new concept. Like I say, I fully, fully support this. I feel it should be considered as a new venue and not an expansion of something existing, even though it's gonna operate under the false, existing, false COP license. It is being pushed as Island Breeze. The liquor license will see that that's a separate entity, and they're gonna look for that modification, too. And it might even operate under a separate license number and be separate accounts for, for any vendors that are in there. So like I say, I fully support this. I think it's a, a good project. And, you know, obviously, as some of you guys know me, I'm all about supporting new bars downtown. I just would like to make sure everything's considered fairly for everybody that applies for a, a new business. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Stuart. You know, this here is just like another, you know, if you remember all the ABC liquor store, they have one liquor store on one side and they have a lounge on the other side. La La Land, you know, we have it on South Florida. It's one liquor store and one lounge on the other side. You go to a lot of the Ebor City, there is several places you go to, they have on one side one venue and the other side, another thing. In Lakeland, we had the country club, I don't remember what the name of it, on the south side, on the north side, where it was, one side is a country and the other side was a rock and roll. You go a lot of different cities, they have different level, New Orleans, for example, okay? You go to one building, it's the same owner. And in Tampa as well, too, maybe the restaurant's on the bottom, and then they have a bar up on the top. On the third floor, they have a dancing. This is, we're trying to bring something new to downtown Lakeland. I believe it was acceptable by the state. You know, the state can tell you can, you can do something. I'm sorry about that. And you can have a different theme in different level, and you can call it anything you want. However, when we file our taxes, it's all gonna be under one tax. The money's gonna go to the same bank as one money. We have the same employee. You know, they work up and they work down. And even now, yeah, we do have some employees, to give them more hours and support their family. We give them a few days at the loft, we give them a few days at the Hookah, and they get two separate checks. And, but when they work in here, they work one day on the top, one work on the bottom, they're gonna get only one check. So we are operating under one license, one identity. Thank you. Thanks, Stuart, for your support.
Anything else?
No, I'm, go ahead, go ahead and read the conditions of approval. So since this is a modification of an existing conditional use, I'm just gonna read the underlined section, which is the parts that we're adding to, to the existing conditional use permit. And number one, the project shall be developed in substantial accordance with the proposed site development plan included as attachments. C and D, with the approval of the Director of Community and Economic Development, minor adjustments may be made at the time of building permit review without requiring a modification to the conditional use. And again, standard conditions we've had for all the bars. And then we added number six, performance standards. A, the conditional use may occupy both floors of the building located at 201 East Main Street slash 108 South Tennessee Avenue, with the option of different branding and theming for each floor, provided that both establishments operate under the same alcoholic beverage license. B, outside seating shall be permitted with, within the parcel limits of the subject property. C, music shall not be played outside of the building except in conjunction with special events for which a special event permit is obtained. And that's all.
Okay. Any other comments? I hear a motion to approve.
Before we do that, Todd, on the last condition, 6C, you know, it's gonna be a, a recessed area, so what, what is, what do you consider outside? I mean, can, can the music be played within the recessed area that's under, underneath the second floor of the building?
No, that's inconsistent with how we've treated other bars.
Yeah, we, we mirrored the Linksters, that, that's the same condition when we approved them. They're not allowed to have music in the outdoor seating area, so that would be the recessed, recessed area there.
So no music in the recessed area of the building?
Correct.
I, I think we ought to specify that, no music outside or within the recessed area of the building, just to be clear about that.
I mean, there's no other outside places really, other than that, but.
It raises the question, what's outside? Is that on the sidewalk, or is that under, undercover?
Because it's under a roof.
Well, we, in B, we say outside seating shall be permitted within the parcel limits of the subject property. So, I don't know. But if you, I didn't find.
I'd prefer to clarify that, so, so it's not a question in the future. So no music played outside or within the recessed area of, of the building?
We can do that.
Sure.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion for, to accept the.
I move with the, we accept it with the addition of the language suggested by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item seven. Application of Plan Unit Development zoning to allow for the development of 19,600 square foot of, feet of professional office, office-type research and development, warehouse storage, and limited industrial service wholesale trade uses on property located at 2815 West Pipkin Road. Owner KP Patel, applicant JSK Consulting.
Good morning. Again, for the record, Todd Vargo, Senior Planner with Community and Economic Development. This property is on the north side of West Pipkin Road. It's right kinda on the edge of the city limits, along Pipkin. You can see the base map in the aerial here. It is currently undeveloped. And for reference purposes, the parcel to the west has a cell tower located on it. Here is the, again, the subject property is undeveloped. It is approximately two point four six acres. It was annexed into the city of Lakeland in two thousand eight, and in two thousand ten was part of a hundred and fifty-nine acre application that was assigned a business park, future land use district. But at that time, a zoning district was not assigned, so they are in for the planned unit development zoning district. Again, the, looking north from West Pipkin Road, you can see the property is, is undeveloped. And then, kind of looking northwest, you can see the cell tower there. That's why I mentioned it before. Again, it's, it's pretty much, it is a hundred percent undeveloped. But you can see the work going on, on West Pipkin Road here as well. Here is a color slide, or a color site plan. The applicant's been working with Polk County to establish this entranceway off of West Pipkin Road. There will be two structures on there totaling nineteen thousand six hundred square feet, parking areas, and then there'll be two stubouts, which are required by our Land Development Code along West Pipkin Road, a stubout to the, property to the west. When this develops, it'll have to, it'll have to have the same stubout, because we don't want people going back out onto Pipkin to get between these properties. And then here's the stubout on the east property side. I'm going to let the applicant come up, make a presentation if they want, or add anything that I didn't say. Here's a black and white site plan showing the same thing.
Good morning. Justin Hinton with JSK Consulting. The address is fifty-nine oh four Hillside Heights Drive, Lakeland, Florida. First, I'd like to thank Todd for his fine presentation and the time of the, and consideration of the city staff this morning. As Todd mentioned, we are proposing two warehouses on this vacant piece of property. There is a drainage or drainage ditch or creek that runs along the backside of the property, which is not impacted as part of the development. In fact, the stormwater management pond is located in the rear of the property to help buffer the, the proposed use against the existing drainage along the backside of the property. As Todd also mentioned, we have been working with the city staff, not only on the crossconnections to the adjacent parcels to the west and the east, but also to limit the uses of these structures. Additionally, we have been permitting with the city, as well as Swiftmod and the county, for the applicable permits. And we have been working closely with the county to make sure that the driveway connection harmonizes with the ongoing construction of West Pipkin Road. Again, I appreciate the city's time, and respectfully request approval of our PUD, and we'll stand for any questions that staff may have.
Questions from the board?
I have a question. Because it currently doesn't have zoning on that parcel, what about the parcels next to that perimeter, that area? Are those yours, or?
Those are, those are not owned by the, the client, no. We're only looking to get PUD zoning on this particular parcel.
Any other questions?
And what kind, I'm sorry, it, it, a warehouse facility, self-storage, what, what are we talking about?
Todd will include the restrictions and the conditions. It's limited to office uses, non-medical, office-type research and development, general warehousing and storage, industrial service uses, level one, but not automobile towing services and wholesale trade uses, level one, is what I believe we've agreed upon in the conditions.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have a list for you next week, or next week, next month, when I have my staff report completed. We'll go over the, the permitted uses through the PUD.
Thank you, sir.
No, but it's at this time that we ask for public, correct?
Yes, I have.
This is the first one, okay.
Thank you.
I'm just, I always get confused when we ask that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? So, we are not taking, you're gonna come back with additional information?
Correct, correct. I'll have my staff report ready for you with the April Planning and Zoning Board, and at that time, we'll give you staff's recommendation and discuss further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, review of minutes for February meeting.
No, it's not worth it.
Item eight. Item eight, change in zoning from limited-impact office to planned unit development to allow for professional office and limited office support, retail, and personal service uses on property located at twenty-three thirty Commercial Commerce Point Drive. Owner Tamar Capital LLC, applicant James Edwards.
Good morning. Again, for the record, Philip Scarish, Principal Planner with Community and Economic Development. This is a, a rezoning from O2 to PUD to hopefully breathe some new life into an existing office complex that was vacated by Summit earlier, last couple of years, with the new construction downtown here. And it's, as we go through this slide, you can see how it's, it's just kinda going downhill. It's going, going down a little bit, as compared to what the, some of the occupied offices there are. But nonetheless, the location of this site, this is Commerce Point Drive here, Crystal Wood Drive. This is, it's an existing office complex here in the Commerce Point. This used to, I believe this used was, was that called AZ Park Road at one time? Yeah, a while, a while back ago. And just gonna go through some slides here. So this is at the end of the cul-de-sac looking south, Crystal Wood Drive, within the existing office complex. This is looking west, along, at the, at that cul-de-sac bulb, this is, you have some of the single-family uses backing up to the site. Again, the, the offices, everything is there. There's no new construction associated with this, with this project. We're just defining a new list of uses, expanded uses to, again, like I said, like I said, breathe some life into this office complex. This is looking north at Crystal Wood and Commerce Point Drive. This is looking northwest, and you can see there is some offices that are occupied. So if you look at this, you know, occupied office compared to what's across the street, there's a big dichotomy there on, on the east and west sides of, of, of Crystal Wood, Wood Drive. It's, you can see that's just, it's just not being maintained. It's just, there's no, there's nobody in these, in these buildings, as you can see here. Another one looking east on Crystal Wood Drive there. So this is at Commerce Point Drive, looking east. You go, keep going down Commerce Point, you'll, you'll run into Comby Road, just right down there. It's an industrial park, but you do have some industrial uses that have, you know, some, you know, the, the typical, you know, showroom-style uses here, where, you know, you have window contractor, whatever, you can go in there and choose out your windows, or your flooring, or whatever. And then, this is looking west on Commerce Drive as well. I believe across the street, there's a call center. This is the existing site plan. Again, there's no, there's no development associated with it. This is a, what you see is what you get site plan. So this will, this will be converted, well, it already has been converted to a black and white site plan. This is what we'll include in, in the, in the PUD ordinance. That'll come back to you next month with our staff recommendation. And we also have a list of uses that the applicant has provided with us. Just go over those. So we have office uses, medical, non-medical, research and development, office support uses, building, business development, and computer stores, drug stores and pharmacies, office furniture and supply stores, sandwich shops and snack bars, to serve the, to serve the area, personal service uses, barber shops, hair salons, business service centers, delivery services, exercise, fitness, martial arts studio, music and dance studios, photocopying, offset printing, tailor dressmaker shops, tax return, preparation services, travel agencies, vet clinics, but not kennels. Other uses associated with the operating characteristics that are similar to the above, and that are deemed compatible with the surrounding uses, as determined by the Department of Community and Economic Development. We have community facilities, so churches, singhogs, and other houses of worships, adult and child daycares. One thing that I think that will be, would be very good potential use here, would be vocational training schools and activities for, you know, the type of uses that are, are associated within that. I think that might be a big market there for, you know, some vocational training schools here in, in, in the building. Healthcare and social services, blood blanks, plasma collection facilities, and then infrastructure and transportation. You have communication studios and utility and essential service facilities, level one, meaning those, you know, police, fire, ambulance type services. With that, I am going to turn it over to the applicant, Jim Studielli, and let him present as well. And we'll stand for any questions you may have.
Good morning. I am Jim Studielli. Continue to be qualified as a member of American Institute of Certified Planners.
Could you give your address, please?
Excuse me?
Your address.
Yes. Nine twenty-five Wedgewood Lane, Lakeland, three-three-eight-one-three. As Philip said, and as is the practice now, the staff pretty much makes a presentation. But this is obvious. Matt and Ken McDermott, who is in the audience in the back, who's the owner, owner's rep of Tamar Capital, it's clear they got a problem. Summit vacated this. We need to broaden the range of uses. To me, it was a no-brainer, and we've simply processed the case forward. We had some debate about the range of uses, but we did this numerous times when I was employed by the city in various business parks. It's interesting, in the time, in recent years, I've been to that Heritage Center, which is right across the street, for office uses twice, had my windshield replaced once, and to pick up a medical device. So all of that area, if you look at the PUDs that are on the books, they're almost all PUD, because this area, some of it developed in the county, and then it was taken into the city. And the city's very careful, as you well know, from the cases you had today. It doesn't just make it C2, it made it PUD, so it ranges from office to some like retail, and that's what we're doing here. And yet, as much as this is a broadening of the use list, it's still pretty limited. So I would simply tell you that we're looking to have the same success that the area around there's had. It's had a resurgence. When we renamed the road, I recall very clearly Seth McKeel was the representative, and Hal Whitman was the developer, and we said, we're gonna change this area, and we renamed the road from AZ Park, which was named after a chemical plant out there in the old days, and we gave it a new life. And the road has had new life, and heritage and some of the other uses have done well. This use needs to enjoy the same level of occupancy and vibrancy. The owner has taken great care of it. I went out there when we started this case and looked at it. It's well-maintained, and it is. It's called Tall Oaks in a lot of cases, and you see that from the first slide. So we would simply ask to move forward. I respectfully asked if it could be approved today, because I think it's a nothing burger, but staff said, no, we can approve it. It's standard. And I know when I was director, at the end of my career, we approved some that way, but I won't push. I'm just a applicant. But Mr. McDermott asked me if I would ask, and I certainly wanted to. It really, I don't think you're gonna get any opposition. We have some other owners in the area that we talked to that are supportive of it. So with that, I'll answer any questions you have. I had a slideshow, but Phil stole it, and there's really nothing to show, so.
I just have a, a small comment. Our first home was back in Crystal Grove in that area, and I still call it AZ Park Road.
Yeah. Well, you know, I wanted to get up and tell you what a great job Solomon has done on the prior case, or two cases prior, because I've watched it. But learning all the history is helpful. It's often not relevant. I've, I've learned to shut my mouth more than I used to. So with that, I'll answer any questions. And Mr. McDermott is here, if you have any questions for the owner.
Any other questions from the board?
So typically, with the PUD, we're looking at, you know, anticipated use and the traffic that it's gonna drive. Sounds like we're opening this up to a very, a variety of, of uses, just to drum up potential businesses. Just knowing what was there previously versus the wide range of uses now, is there, is there a look at traffic from a worst-case scenario that, that we've done?
We, we discussed traffic at the very onset. In fact, if we needed a big traffic analysis, I was stepping away, and Mr. Barnby, who's the expert in that area, said, no, no traffic analysis needed. It was pure office, which was not, I mean, it was built by the owners. You know, Dockery and Petkoff built it and owned it until these recent years, so. But we don't anticipate it changing. I will tell you this, staff will review, when you move into something new, you go through a review, and that review will look at parking. And if parking's inadequate, it's gonna deal with that. It could be that some of the parking is excess, and you may reduce it. As far as traffic, office generates a good bit. Medical office, if it became Lakeland Regional, it would generate more, because medical office generates more, has more people in the waiting room. But no, we, we beat that around very briefly and said, it's not gonna generate significantly more traffic on that major collector.
And, and, and I would say, from a traffic standpoint, that the previous use, I mean, we have a massive influx of employees, you know, in a set period in the morning and the afternoon, and at least with the palette of uses that are anticipated here, you would have some internal capture, and, you know, having a, having a small restaurant or snack bar of that kind, you know, maybe, you know, other types of services that are there, we could, we can capture some of those, you know, trips and not have them have to go out to Bartova or, or Comby Road. So, I mean, I, I believe that the, the trips are gonna be very comparable. If anything, we're gonna see a benefit from the AM and PM peaks particularly.
A quick question for the city. If the applicant chooses at some point in time to add buildings or add, change the site plan, they would need to come back?
That would be a change to the PUD, so they would need to come back in for a modification to that, to, to their ordinance.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have one other question, too, in terms of signage. If there was anticipated a master signage plan, or how that was going to be addressed, given the different types of uses that were?
I think, as it evolves, if he gets a major tenant, you may give a major signage. I left the city for four years and developed strip centers, and signage was always a big deal for the tenants. But if you get the multitude of lots of tenants, you'll continue likely to sign it as Tall Oaks, because it's been known as that, and, you know, Office Park or Center, so that it's not just office. But I don't think they've anticipated anything different, no.
Yeah, I don't think they probably would be large enough to qualify for a comprehensive signage. I think it's fifty acres.
Fifty acres.
Yeah, no.
So they could, they could surely coordinate the road signage internally, though, with existing owners' association.
Any other questions from Studielli? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any comments from the public?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
My name is Barbara Brooks, twenty-four eighteen East Sivitan. Is it my assumption that he's not gonna tear down any residence homes? Because we got a letter with all this, with this plan, and it includes Sivitan Street?
Yes, ma'am. There is no, we're only looking at just the Office Park itself. So the, the houses that are surrounding, you just got notified, just being, any of the residences that are, that are adjacent to the site.
Because I've lived there forty-seven and a half years, and I did not want to.
We, we, we send those letters out as a courtesy to the surrounding property owners to let them know that there is a, a potential change, and, and to let them know of, of this hearing and, and the process. And so that's all that that was intended to do. the process, and so that's all that that was intended to do, is let you know that there was, there was something being discussed, a change, and to make sure you're in the loop.
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That pretty much concludes...
Yes, sir. We'll be back next month with our recommendation for this.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our open meeting for the public. Now we go to the, a review of our minutes from the February meeting. I assume everybody has had a chance to go over them and read them carefully. Is there a motion to accept minutes?
I had one revision to the minutes. I believe the attorney's name is wrong on the ten, so we'll make that edit.
Any other changes? Now, is there a motion to accept minutes as written with the proposed change suggested?
I move to accept the minutes with the proposed change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 10, honor.
Item 10. Major modification to planned unit development zoning to allow for the construction of a 41,000-square-foot fieldhouse building, a 4,000-square-foot expansion of an existing childcare building, and relocation of existing off-street parking facilities on property located at 3620 Cleveland Heights Boulevard, Lakeland Family YMCA. Owner, Young Men's Christian Association, applicant, Shelton Rice Peterson and Myers, P.A.
Good morning, again for the record, Philip Scarish, Principal Planner of Community Economic Development. We have the applicant stay here with us today before we make our presentation, but I believe they wanted to make a request to you, and I'll leave it over to Mr. Allen.
Good morning, Commission, for the record, Bart Allen, Land Use Attorney with the Peterson and Myers Law Firm, 225 East Lemon Street, Lakeland, Florida. We are here this morning, wanted to ask for a continuance to the next Planning Commission hearing in order to clarify some of the conditions that were being recommended. I think due to the short month of February, spring break, and everybody's personal time off, we just kinda ran into a time crunch and need to reevaluate a few things. So we're asking to go to April.
Motion to grant the continuance request.
I move to grant the continuance request.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Item 11. Change in zoning from pedestrian commercial to multifamily residential on property located at 401 West Peachtree Street. Owner, 401 West Peachtree Street LLC, applicant, Delance Pro.
I will need to recuse myself from this project due to the applicant being my husband's friend.
Good morning, Mary Stoll, Senior Planner, Community Economic Development. The request here brought to you is the change zoning from C1 pedestrian commercial to MF22 multifamily on property located on 401 West Peachtree. This is the general location of the property. The red box kind of hides Lake, Lake Wire, but it's, Lake Wire's just south of the property. And this here is just the aerial overview. You can see Lake Wire and the surrounding uses. Currently, the zoning all around on the north end is multifamily, and, and there's a business to the west of the property. The subject property consists of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 within the, within the block 13 of this subdivision. The property consists of two structures. One of the structures is a former single-family dwelling unit that was converted to a restaurant. The, the zoning back in May 20th of 2002, property was rezoned from O1 Low-Impact Office to the C1 that is currently, to allow for the conversion of the former single-family home into the restaurant. The restaurant operated between 2006 and 2002, until 2011, which operated the East Doors Restaurant, and it has been vacant since 2011. The subject property has a future land use of residential high within, located within this urban neighborhood context district, and is the, is also the boundaries of the Lakeland Downtown Development Authority, the LDDA, and the downtown CRA districts. And the purpose of this request is to obtain zoning, which will allow for the redevelopment of the property for multifamily residential uses. If approved by the commission, the former single-family home and the accessory building will either be relocated or demolished. As mentioned earlier, the property's been vacant since 2011, which suggests that there's little or no market demand for development of property for commercial, C1 commercial uses. The property is located, as I mentioned earlier, it's in the downtown west area, which is also includes the Bonnet Springs Park, and, you know, Lake Buella, Lake Wire, all of those areas are in the strategic plan for downtown CRA redevelopment, revision of that area. And the establishment of, are the redevelopment plan, and is, hopefully will be provided by early summer of 2023 to see the vision of the area. For this request, the multifamily zoning will allow the development for the residential uses, and it will be in accordance with our comprehensive plan. So current residential high, future land use designation is a maximum density of 75 units per dwelling unit acre. This development proposal is to construct a four-story multifamily property with a maximum of 32 units. For this point 82 parcel, translates about net density of 39 dwelling units per acre. So, whoops. The proposed development's approximately 24 one-bedroom units and then eight two-bedroom units. The minimum parking for the proposed development is 1.5 parking space for each two-bedroom units, and then one parking space for the one-bedroom units, which is a total of 36 parking spaces. The applicant has provided a total of 42 parking spaces, so it exceeds the land development code requirement. Subject property is also located near the central city transit support area, and, and it's also within a quarter mile of the transit-oriented corridors. The subject property is ideal redevelopment site for multifamily residents due to the existing infrastructure, proximity to transit, and the downtown area. And just wanted to kinda swiftly go through these photos of the property. So you can see the current single-family home that was converted into the restaurants here, and then the accessories kind of in the foreground there. You can see it. This here is the view from west corner, east on, viewing, facing east on Peachtree Street. And then this here is the center of the property facing West Magnolia Street. And this is the northwest corner facing east on West Magnolia Street. There's kind of a driveway that leads into, there's the view from the driveway there. And the southeast corner facing northeast on Virginia Avenue North. This here is the proposed site plan. As you see, the four-story building here in the parking area will be off to the side of, off of Virginia Avenue's entrance. And these are the provided renderings that were for the proposed project. And it's just the street, Peachtree Street view, and then this is kind of like a aerial rendering of the proposed project. And the Economic Development Department reviewed the request and recommends the approval of the change in zoning from C1 pedestrian commercial to multifamily, MF22 multifamily, and we did not receive any letters or emails in opposition for this request. Stand for any questions?
Do we have a question?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion?
Oh, good, any questions?
Any questions? And we have a motion to accept the request. No motion?
I make a motion, we accept it as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 12.
Item 12. Report of City Commission action on Planning and Zoning Board recommendations, along with Planning and Transportation Manager's report.
All right, I'll be very brief. The, the actions from the February 20th meeting are in your packet. Yesterday, the City Commissioner approved the two packets of land use, land development code changes that were presented last month, as well as the small-scale land use amendment and the, and the PUD for the Neville Avenue apartments, the utility issues associated with that. You know, those are still an issue, but, you know, those conversations don't impact the zoning, and so we went ahead and moved that through to the City Commission. And then the self-storage on Harden Boulevard is scheduled for final action on April 3rd. So there's, there was an additional two weeks that was put into there to meet the applicant's schedule. But other than that, I think next, next, next month should be about the same, same load as we have today, and so...
Can we get a guarantee?
I, I definitely am not a betting man in that regard, so. But again, we thank you for your time, and hopefully, looks like, looks like we can be under two hours.
Any other questions from the board?
Just real quick before you, Jordan, I just want to introduce Alex Lambach. He's a new Assistant City Attorney in our office, and he's gonna be helping out the board going forward, so I want to introduce him to you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, just one other, this item. You should have received the, sent the date for Friday, April 21st, for the Boards and Committees Dinner. This is the annual appreciation dinner we have to recognize your service on the board. I believe the last one was back in August, it wasn't long, long ago, so this year, they've moved it forward to April, and the weather's still fairly nice. I believe it's gonna be at Cleveland Heights Golf Course, that is a Friday night, so that would be from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. So if you want to attend, we look forward to seeing you there.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
And welcome to the team.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.